Surveys, I would say yes.
We will now call to order the meeting of the Muskogee Municipal Authority for November 14th, 2022. In advance of beginning that meeting, we will have a presentation by Mr. Doug Walton of the 2021 Certified Healthy Business Award. We ask that he come forward at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, we'd like to present to the City of Muskogee the Certified Healthy Business Award for the Level of Excellence for 2021. The city has been very supportive of the employees and staff of the city in trying to ensure they have as many opportunities for healthy options, and this is a recognition of that by the Oklahoma State Department of Health and Muskogee County Health Department. And I commend you and appreciate your efforts as a city to help the employees be healthier. At this time, I'd like to ask you if you could come down for a photo with the mayor receiving this and the council in the front. It would be great.
We will now have the invocation by Deputy Mayor Derek Reed, followed by the flag salute. Let us stand.
Shall we pray? Dear Lord, we come once again to thank you for the gift of another day. Thank you for all your blessings. Thank you for grace, mercy, and love. Ask that you would just look upon us tonight as we come together to make decisions for our community. Let all that we do be in your will and in your way. These are many of the blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Let's turn to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Here.
Item number one.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of October 10th, 2022, or take other necessary action.
The minutes appear before us and I pack it's on tonight. Do we have any corrections to the minutes or a motion to adopt?
Move for approval?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number one passes. Item number two?
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending October 31st, 2022, or take other necessary action.
Claims appear before us tonight. Do we have any questions concerning the claims?
Move for approval?
Do we have a motion to approve?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second on the claims. Further discussion. Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now call to order the Muskogee City Council meeting for November 14th, 2022. Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Jones. Tracy McGee.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Here.
We will now entertain a motion to excuse Stephanie Jones.
Move for approval?
Second.
Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider approval of the minutes for the City Council Regular Session October 24th, or take other necessary action. Do we have any corrections to the minutes or a motion to approve?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. We will now consider the consent agenda, which consists of items numbers one through 12. Are there any items to be moved to the regular agenda, or do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second on the consent agenda. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 13.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4176A to close a 20-foot easement located between lots five and six, Rolling Oaks Estates, for the purpose of lot consolidation or take other necessary action.
Ms. Alex.
Yes, good evening.
Pardon me. We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Alex.
Thank you, sir. This is a simple lot consolidation at 2922 Oklahoma Street. It's a closure of a 20-foot easement located between lots five and six in the Rolling Oaks Estate. Replat a replat of the Rolling Oaks Estates Phase 1 and 2 to the City of Muskogee. This was approved unanimously at planning and zoning. It was also brought last week to the Public Works Agenda. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Thank you, Ms. Alex. No one has signed to speak to this item, so we will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the body?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 13. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 14 was not scheduled to be discussed as presented because we don't have the correct information that's received as of this date. I'm going to ask Mr. Tucker at this time to give us further clarification.
So at the committee, the committee directed staff to obtain a couple of surveys to allow the council to discuss a couple of options on how to further consider this zoning request. So since staff has not received those surveys back, I think it would probably be appropriate to table this item. This item did have to appear on the agenda because it was published as a public hearing, and so in order to not have to publish the agenda again, rather, publish the notice again, it needed to appear on this item and then have further action of the council to table it. So at this time, Ms. Alex, do we anticipate a timeframe for when that information will be available?
Whether, depending, we should have it by the end of the week.
Okay.
I spoke with Tony from Heartland this afternoon.
Okay. So probably, Mayor, we will need an action to table this to?
I might suggest, just to be on the safe side, that we go for the December 12th council meeting, just to make sure that we are able to have all our work done in time. That's about 30 days.
Okay. Then, Mayor, that would be my suggestion, is that this item be tabled to December 12th for further action.
Do we need a motion of that effect?
You do.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on tableing item number 14. Let me say to those who have signed up to speak, we really don't have an item to speak to since the item is scheduled to be tabled and appears for legal purposes only on tonight. So we apologize for any inconvenience, misunderstanding for you having to be here tonight, but we look forward to seeing and hearing from you on December 12th. Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes. Item number 15.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4175A to rezone property located at 2401 East Hancock Street, owners Inks &amp; Inks LLC, being more particularly described in the ordinance, "From C1 Local Commercial to C2 General Commercial, and if approved, authorize staff to revise the official zoning map of the city to reflect said change or take other necessary action."
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Alex.
Yes, good evening. Again, this is the simple rezone at 2401 East Hancock Street. It will allow them to change, as the clerk mentioned, from a C1 to a C2. They would like to do some outside display, garden, furniture, that type of thing. It met with all the requirements. It went through planning and zoning. It was passed unanimously. It was also heard last week as well. So we are recommending approval of this.
Thank you, Ms. Alex. No residents have signed to speak to this item on tonight, so I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on item number 15. Further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item passes. Item number 16.
Hold a public hearing, excuse me, and consider a request from Yasan Key, applicant, for a specific use permit to allow for medical marijuana cultivation and a medical marijuana dispensary within the C2 General Commercial District, more specifically, a property located at 222 South 32nd Street, or take other necessary action.
We will now open the public hearing. Ms. Alex.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. It is a specific use permit for 222 South 32nd Street. The owner and the applicants, I know that name was read, they wish to add cannabis dispensary and a cannabis grow to an existing massage business there. It is currently, it's a C2, it's currently being used for massage. It did go to planning and zoning last Monday. It was denied at planning and zoning. There were concerns about traffic and odor along the business. I went back out after our meeting on Monday, and I wanted to take a look at how close the business, the rear of the business was to the residential area, and I have added some photos in here. That's the front of the business. This is towards the rear of the business. On the south side, the white property is actually a residential house, and that's another view of the residential property that's backing up to the rear of the business. As I mentioned, it was denied at planning and zoning, and I think we're, if you need additional information, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Alex. We have two residents signed to speak to us tonight. As I call your name, please come to the microphone and give us your name and your address. You will have five minutes. Donnie Echols.
Good evening. My name is Donnie Echols. I reside at 2337 Freedonia. I'm the pastor of Boston Avenue Baptist Church, which is 201 South 30th, which is within 300 feet of the building that is making this recommendation. We've been here before, ladies and gentlemen, when it came to zoning it, and we keep battling this. What caught my attention with the notification that I received was the word cultivation, and that concerns my congregation. That concerns me as a smell, as it is close to our church. It's where our children play. We have a lot there. We have a basketball goal in our parking lot right back against it. We're actually behind this house. We own the lots. Is it possible that we could have the, we own the lots, I think it is one through nine, there on Boston Avenue and 30th Street. We own all that property there and, again, across the street there as well. It's not an issue about medical marijuana. It's an issue of, it's just in that neighborhood. This is just not the appropriate place for a permit for this place. It's too close to the church, again, too close for children play. We deal with the smell during the planning and zoning, and I'm very appreciative that they voted in our favor, and we're asking that you do that as well. The comments was, from the lady that's the permit in this planning meeting, was she wasn't making enough rent for her massage parlor, and then also needing it and quoted no smell and different things like that. My response and rebuttal to that is just not the place for it. Again, it's too close to us, and we are recommending and asking you as the city council to deny this permit.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Echols?
Yes, I do. Mr. Echols, is this location accessible only from 32nd Street?
It is now. However, there is an alley easement there, and when we went through this three years ago, all the city did was make them put a privacy fence to block the alley. I had showed pictures, but there's a lot of foot traffic of questionable folks that come in and around that property.
Is this fence that I'm looking at right now, the privacy fence that they have provided?
No, but it's pretty close to that.
Okay.
It's pretty close to that.
Is, do we have a picture of the privacy fence between?
If you would mind, I could, can I go by the picture and point out?
Take the microphone with you.
Okay.
Please, because we're recording.
Do I have your permission to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. This alleyway, this is the fence that the city required for them to put up, and then our church is actually right behind here, our property.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Echols? Thank you, Mr. Echols.
Thank you.
The other resident signed to speak to us tonight, and forgive me if I don't pronounce your name correctly, Davana Parson. Please come to the microphone, give us your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Davana Parson. I live at 2903 Haddock Drive. It's a Southgate Edition, but I work in Cape Frank Apartments, which is across the highway from this location that we're talking about. And I'm speaking in behalf of my residents and my job and everything because just driving through town, it is an issue. It's going to be across the road from residents now. I have residents that wear masks because allergies and their health. It's older people, and we just don't need another one inside the city limits. Just bottom line, you know. I appreciate you guys considering and giving us the opportunity to speak on, me speaking on the behalf of all of my residents, and I work there every day, and I just care about our community, and I just don't think it belongs in the city limits. You know, it needs to be outside the city limits for these kinds of businesses.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Do we have any questions for Ms. Parson on tonight?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
We will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to deny.
Second. We have a motion and a second to deny. Any further discussion on item number 16?
Mayor, let's just, if we may, clarify the rationale for the denial. Is that based upon the same analysis as the planning commission?
Yeah, based on planning and zoning, I've moved to deny this request.
Are we clear?
Can I, you know, for the sake of always getting to this crossroads when it comes to rows, where are we at on the mapping and an agenda item for putting these items, you know, in agriculture areas?
Mr. Tucker.
It is item number 17, the next item.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to deny.
So just to clarify, a yes is to deny?
Yes is to deny. Are we clear?
Yes.
Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Yes.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Can I abstain on this?
Yes, you can. I believe you have, under the charter, you have to state a reason for the denial, and that is to ensure that there's no conflict of interest.
I would like to abstain. I don't think that we should be voting on these. I think we should change the zoning or the special use permit.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman.
Yes, the item is denied. Item number 17.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4178A, amending the City of Muskogee Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 22, Business Regulations, Article 17, Medical Marijuana, Section 22-677, Commercial Medical Marijuana-Growing and/or Processing Facilities, and Section 22-678, Medical Marijuana Ho-Sale and/or Storage Facilities, adding repealer, severability, codification, and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. At this point, I would like to invite Ms. Bodenhammer, our deputy city attorney, to come to the microphone to make the presentation on this item. She has done the work on putting this together based upon council direction, and so I would like her to make the presentation.
Ms. Bodenhammer.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This is an ordinance that we're proposing to amend and restrict marijuana grow facilities, waste facilities, and storage facilities, those being the facilities that produce odor to agricultural zones. The zoning legend for our city is agriculture is the green. And if you'll see on the next picture, we have highlighted just the agricultural zones in the city limits. So we are proposing that grows, waste, and storage facilities be restricted to those areas with a specific use permit. Our current ordinance does not have any kind of prohibition on zoning or any zoning requirements for waste facilities. That's never been dealt with, so this will deal with that. We're also proposing that all grow and storage facilities have to be equipped with the proper ventilation and air filtration systems and comply with state and local laws. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhammer.
Ms. Bodenhammer, one thing before you step away. I did want to clarify, since it isn't directly stated in the ordinance as grandfather of existing businesses. Will you address that?
Yes. So the way it is right now, if there's an existing business that is still grandfathered in, if it changes ownership, the new laws state that if it's, that we have to then look at another specific use permit if it's beyond a certain time period. But currently, the grows that are located in city limits in commercial districts or wherever we've allowed them, those are grandfathered in.
And that doesn't necessarily need to be addressed in this ordinance because it's under the standard grandfather provision within the zoning code.
Yes, that's correct.
Meaning in the provision related to legal nonconforming use, whenever there's a zoning change.
Yes. In addition, the new state, part of the new state laws that came out specifically reference grandfathering, and that existing grow and storage facilities will be grandfathered in.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Reynolds.
We had worked out an arrangement, I believe, before where existing cannabis business were going to be allowed to continue to integrate.
Expand.
Expand. Does that still, does that still work here?
This proposed ordinance will not affect that. So if there's a grow facility that's existing in the city limits, I cannot remember, Mr. Reynolds, if that can expand. I think that in order to expand, you have to get approval for that.
If I'm not mistaken, when we were working on this, we talked about the best way for a cannabis business to stay in business is to grow their own product, process, and then sell their own product. And so everyone's goal is eventually to start at one of those and work up to all three. And I believe that in the communications we had with the people who owned dispensaries or processors, if they intended to multi-integrate, that they would be able to add those without going through.
Well, I understand.
And that's correct.
I understand your question now. So that one of the new state laws that comes out says if a marijuana facility changes its character to go from a dispensary to a grow, that will require a different type, a different city license, would then, would, that would then mean that they can't do that if we restrict to agricultural?
They would have to add each license that they added.
Yes, at the state level.
And the city licensing, but they would not need, I just want to clarify, they would not need to come before this body and get another special use permit.
If they changed the character of the facility, for instance, from a dispensary to a grow or expand to a grow, they would have to appear back before this body. They would have to get a new license, a new specific use permit for a grow, and they would have to get a state license.
But, Ms. Bodenhammer, what you're talking about is a change in state law?
Yes, based on change in state law November 1st.
But that has not been adopted. We have not amended our ordinances to make that change yet. So that has to do with the state licensing issues.
We've told our existing people that have asked, how does your special use permit apply to my business?
Right.
And they've said our intentions, several have said our intentions are to grow our business, and we've let them know that we will not stop them or put them through the rigmarole of a special use permit.
Yeah, until we, so, so the state law with respect to the state licensing, they, we have no control over that, as you well know. But our own code in where we allow them and the specific use permit requirement, we have not changed since that time. And that, that provision that allowed someone to expand the footprint of their business, which is within the specific use permit ordinance, has not changed. So even though they may have to go and get a different license from the state to comply with state law, as long as they fit within our code, we could still allow them without an additional specific use permit unless we change that, unless we change that ordinance.
If they qualify for changing their licenses with the state, do that, apply for the city licenses, they won't do all of that and then find out that our special use permit will stop them after all that.
No, because they have to, I believe, apply, in order to get their state license, they have to have our approval. So that will happen before that or at the same time because we have to submit the certificate of compliance.
That's correct.
Yes.
I just want to make sure we don't have more people coming in confused.
Well, no, and you've still got the moratorium in place that's for two years anyway.
Yes, and just additionally also, I am reviewing all the new marijuana laws. We'll be preparing a memorandum to update city council.
And I do want to point out to everyone that the moratorium laws do not apply to buying existing licenses. So you can still buy an existing license and transfer in and out of locations. So it's still business as usual.
That's correct. So if someone has a marijuana facility, they can sell it.
So, Mr. Reynolds, let me make sure, the city clerk has pointed out that maybe I misunderstood your question. So are you speaking of if someone wants to add a new type of, give me an example again?
When we were working on our special use permit, several business owners came to us and said, please don't stop us from expanding our business. We could only afford a dispensary now, but we intend to expand into this building behind us and do a grow or a processor, or they've started out as a grower, hoping to expand to a dispensary or a processor to both. But that has been the goal of most people that are in this business, and we have led them to believe, to my memory, that as long as they were already open and in business, that we would not stop them from multi-integrating their business.
So the specific use permit only talks about commercial marijuana uses. It doesn't delineate between grows, processing, or anything. It just, commercial marijuana businesses. So whether they need a dispensary or whatever, they have to come back and get a specific use permit. So you're saying in the instances that they already have a specific use permit and then want to add an additional?
Correct. If you would go talk to dispensary owners or processors or whatever, especially the ones that have located on 32nd Street or in major traffic areas, their intentions are mostly to add additional things. They want to add processing or add growing at some level. And if I remember right, we were talking to them, we informed them that we would not stop them from doing that, that they would be allowed to multi-integrate if they were already in business.
Under the specific use permit, that's accurate.
Under the existing.
But unless we put that similar language here, then they, they would be outside of the correct zoning. If they were a dispensary and they wanted to add a grow and expand, they wouldn't need necessarily a new specific use permit, but they wouldn't be properly in the right zoning classification unless we include a provision that exempts existing businesses allowing them to expand and whatnot, the same way that we had done previously.
I would really like us to take a look at what we did say before, before we pass something and make sure. We're already confused, and it's difficult to vote on these things, and it's, people are calling constantly, asking, you know, about a lot of questions, traffic studies and all these things that we've added. My understanding was that we would allow that, and I would love to go back and look at that and make sure that we're doing what we said we would do, or if, before we change the rules, again, I would like to make sure that we have what we said we would do, or at least consider implementing that into this, because there are a lot of people that have sunk their life savings into a business with the intentions of moving forward. Just because we meet here in this room and talk about it, and just because it's on Channel 14, does not mean that- 14, does not mean that most people get this information. Most people do not get this information.
So we're, just to be, and we're happy to do whatever you want, but I just want to clarify that we're talking about two different things. One was the specific use permit, whether we're going to allow it at a particular location. And one, which is the one that's up now, is which particular zoning it can be allowed. And so.
By changing the zoning to agriculture right here, and us not having put that correct wording in already, or for that, it would stop someone who's in the central business district, already has their plans to do what we're talking about, and may already have the ball rolling on that.
Right, it wouldn't require them to do anything with specific use, but they wouldn't be able to do it for purposes of where it's allowed by zoning. So you wouldn't need a new specific use permit, because that wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to get around the zoning with a specific use permit.
If we changed the zoning.
Yes, yes.
I'm pretty sure that we told everyone we would not do that to them.
Can we go back and see what we already have? Are you able to pull that up to see what the language is?
Uh, let's see.
Because my understanding on that, if they want to expand, that you would allow them to expand on their existing property long as they do not move. If they move, they could not, the way it was written, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't want to be confused in this matter and tricked into voting something. So are we trying to say dispensary today can grow tomorrow, and we said that it was okay for a dispensary today to grow tomorrow in commercial districts or anything like that? I don't recall that being the decision.
If you can find it.
Came out with the special use permit. I don't recall that.
This was before the special use permit.
Yeah, this is before we went to a special use.
When we came to, when we went to the special use, it was for, to make sure that we, made sure that we put those precautions in place. I know we did not agree, I know that we did not say as a body, that if you have a dispensary today, tomorrow, you can grow, and that's the future. I don't know, if I'm the only one that misses something, I don't remember saying.
You're correct. That's my regulation as well. And then, I mean, is there something that we can do to, to help restrict the smell and the odor from the existing grows that we have downtown? More, that's not being in compliance?
Well, we've got an executive session to talk about that, but.
Okay.
So we'll talk about that then.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, Mr. Reynolds.
I believe that we're talking about two different things. I was heavily involved with this first ordinance, real similar to this, then we ended up not doing, going to special use. What it was, was if they had a dispensary, but they wanted to expand their dispensary, that was okay, or if their dispensary burned down, they could rebuild without this, or even if their grow was there and it burned down, they wouldn't have to come back through, they could rebuild, and it would maintain the same licensing that it was. And that's the language that I remember that was in, in that first ordinance that we, that we tried to put through.
We haven't, Council McGee, we haven't done a codification since we passed that ordinance, so I can't pull it up.
Thank you.
So we can certainly table this to allow us to have those answers for you for next, the next meeting, which is the?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Yes.
What is the will of the council?
A move that we table it so that we're all be on the same page of understanding what the language is.
Second. We have a motion and a second on item number 17. Any further discussion? A yes is to table?
Correct.
Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
No.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
No.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
No.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
No.
We have four noes.
Motion passes?
Tied. We only have eight.
Mr. Tucker, correct me, if it's a tie, it fails.
Yes, it's got to have five to pass, so another motion could be made.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass the agenda item as printed.
We have a motion from Deputy Mayor Reed. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
No.
Alex Reynolds?
No.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes.
The item passes. Item number 18.
Consider approval of the appointment of Wayne Davelbis as the Ward Four Commissioner to the Urban Renewal Authority, replacing Stephen White, to serve a term commencing upon appointment and expiring August 31, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Ms. McGee.
This is my appointment, and I think Wayne would do a good job on that board, so I recommend approval.
We have a motion on item number 18.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, item number 18 passes. We have one citizen signed to speak to us tonight, Jamie Stout. If you give us your name and your address, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Jamie Stout. I live at 319 Kingsway. I just wanted, we just held our honorary street dedication and the 25th anniversary induction ceremony and concert this past weekend over at the Oklahoma Music Hall of Fame, and I just wanted to give a shout out to our city staff, our civic center staff for going above and beyond to help make our event possible this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stout. Item number 19.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development, including development of a proposal to entice development within the northwest quadrant of the City of Muskogee, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the possible filing of a civil action against June Green LLC, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim of Brenda Reagan, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
We'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Alex Reynolds?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, we will now convene into executive session. All of those who are not party to this item, please excuse yourselves from the chamber at this time. Thank you. We will now reconvene from executive session.
Roll call.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Here.
Jamie Stout?
Here.
Alex Reynolds, Stephanie Jones, Tracy McGee?
Here.
Tracy Whoos?
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Here.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig?
Here.
Mr. Tucker.
Mayor, item number 19A pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, the city council did convene an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to economic development, including a development of a proposal to entice development within the northwest quadrant of the city. After being briefed on the status of those discussions, there will be two separate votes required on this item. The first, a proposed motion would be to approve, to approve a sales tax rebate agreement between the city and Olive Garden Holdings LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute the same for development on the southeast corner of Highway 69 and Shawnee Bypass.
Let me hear a motion, please.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
Yes.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Marlon Coleman?
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor. And the second proposed motion under item 19A would be to approve an option to purchase real property between Enhoff Land and Cattle Inc. and the city and South York Plaza LLC, and authorize the city manager to execute the same for development on the northeast corner of Highway 69 and Shawnee Bypass.
Do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Pearl Ann Boyati Craig?
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery?
Yes.
Tracy Whoos?
Yes.
Tracy McGee?
No.
Jamie Stout?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed?
Yes.